It's seven o'clock. I will call the April 16th meeting of the City Council to order. Misty, can you have, can you call the roll, please?
Ms. Curler?
Here.
Mr. Waters?
Here.
Ms. Schmager?
Here.
Ms. Quinno?
Here.
Mr. Fields?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you, and please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll move on to item number four, election of council president, and then also welcome Ms. Mary Schmager, her first meeting with the city council.
Thank you.
So at this point, I will, the floor is open for nominations for council president.
Well, I would like to nominate Lisa Curler for a second year as president.
Are there any other nominations? Ms. Curler, do you accept the nomination?
I do, thank you.
Are there any other nominations? So all those in support of Ms. Lisa Curler as city council president, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. Ms. Curler, you can take the seat and take the rest of the meeting.
All right. I'll move over to the middle.
Can I move over then?
Absolutely. Yeah, please do. Thank you, everyone. I appreciate the opportunity to serve as president for another year, and appreciate your confidence in me. It's an honor to serve. So our next agenda item is election of the council vice president. So is there any nomination for council vice president?
I'll nominate Mr. Waters for vice president.
Mr. Fields has nominated Greg Waters for vice president. Mr. Waters, do you accept?
Yes.
Okay. Are there any other nominations for vice president? Any other nominations for vice president? Okay, if not, I'll close the nominations, and for everyone who is in favor of Greg Waters for vice president, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All right, thank you, everyone. Thank you, Greg, for your willingness to serve. So our next agenda item, number six, is the council member board reports and acceptance of meeting minutes. So we have meeting minutes from our Ad-Hoc Committee on Urban Forest Management from February 26, and our city council minutes from April 2. Are there any questions or comments on either of these minutes? Hearing none?
I have a question. I have a question regarding where I may find the Ad-Hoc Committee on Urban Forest Management minutes, set of objectives. Are they posted?
If you go where you can find our agendas on the website, at the top of the page, you'll find the charter resolution that includes their, the charges as assigned to them by the city council.
Thank you.
If you, if you can't find it, let me know, and I can send it to you.
Okay. I did a little searching, and I'm not quite sure I was searching on the right keywords, so, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Okay, hearing none. We'll accept those into the record. Our next agenda item, number seven, is the Joint Rock Lake Committee monthly report, and we have Wendy Davies here tonight.
Hi, good evening. Our committee, one of, our biggest project right now going on is a lot of educational articles for the leader, and we have, and we've also are going to any article we send to the leader, we're going to send also to the Lake Mills community page for public, for, on Facebook. And we have three kind of in the hopper right now. They're at the town board, have to be approved through them. One is, "You can tune a piano, but you cannot tune a fish," which has to do with handling of live bait and fishing rules and regulations. The other one is paddleboat sports in cold water, which you've already seen, I'm sure, a few kayaks out there. I don't know if there's any paddleboards out there yet. And then, in general, boating safety and tips. So those will get approved, that probably at the next meeting, and then we can start getting them in. And our process was to try and put one in a month. Some of these might be nice to put more of them in, because they kind of relate to cold water, so I guess we'll make that decision at our meeting, too. We're keeping informed with the group investigating if a lake district is right for Lake Mills and Rock Lake. So I, we attend those meetings to find out what's going on with that. And in our group, we are going to put a bigger focus on that interest in the Joint Rock Lake Committee and see where we're standing on, on those things also. We'll be adding, also be adding wetland study discussion in our next agenda, so we can see where our position is on that. A lot of studying going on with that in groundwater. We, one of us tries to attend and does attend generally the RLIA meetings, so we can keep in tune and up to date with their activities, and they keep in tune with our activities. There are many events that they're sponsoring. A couple of them I'd like to note. One is the Rain Barrel Workshop on May 4, and you probably know about it. It's kind of at one of the buildings for the city. And they have many legendary learning events that they will be posting, that people will be able to go on. I don't have those listed right now. And in the near, I think, April 23, they're having a hydrologist do presentation at the library regarding watershed management. More education, the better. And all these are listed on their website and Facebook postings, so you can get more information there. Daniel Smith attended the Lake and River Convention in Stevens Point, and he'll be giving us a report in May. One of the biggest focuses we asked him to pay attention to is, and it probably wasn't too hard, but on wake boat legislation. And in conjunction with that, the RLIA will be presenting at our next meeting and discussing their position. I've received, oh, we also have been having some healthy discussions regarding the dam management policy, trying to understand it. And this got brought up, because I've gotten maybe about six calls saying what's going on, the dam's wide open, the lake's going to be empty, and I personally didn't know what the answers were. And just for your information and for you to think about, I went to the city website, couldn't find anything. I went to the community, Lake Mills Community Facebook, thought maybe somebody posted something that they know. Then I went to RLIA, and they didn't have anything. So I think, underlying, we discussed that it would be nice if you could pretend for a while you're, you're spectrum, and give us a little notice of just what's going on, you know, and say, "You may wonder why the dam's wide open. It's not generally that way. This is the reason. Don't be alarmed." So just a suggestion, and we didn't make any rulings on it. We just discussed it at our meeting. But we did have a nice, healthy discussion about that, and Eric spent some time explaining, actually for me, how to read the little legend, and also why it's open and why it's not just spilling over the top. So it was, it was very, very good. We've also discussed working on projects before being commissioned by the town or the city to work on things. So things that are, like wake, like the wake boat, and other things that are just out there in the general interest of the lake. We might want to bring some of those up and just get going on some discussion with that. And as always, if there's anything you would like us to work on, please let us know, and we will do it. You have any questions?
Any questions for Wendy? Thank you. Thanks for your report. Appreciate it. Okay, our next agenda item, number eight, is correspondence. Michelle, can I, Ms. Quinno, can I start with you?
Sure. I really had a nice, quiet email, but I did receive correspondence regarding the dump site. I think that's what I would call it, right? The, where we put the natural waste.
Oh, yard waste.
And inform, yeah, and information as to how that process was going. So, that was it.
Great. Ms. Schmager, you want to go? You ready?
I'm ready. And just for the council and management, I prefer to be called Mary.
Okay.
I prefer a first name.
Okay.
I actually was not official, but I did get correspondence on plow policy, or plowing.
Okay, great.
Yeah, it was very quiet the last couple of weeks, but just got the confirmation on the Wisconsin Pipeline Safety Program. I'll be attending that conference next week, on Thursday.
Great, thank you for that. Mr. Waters?
I just had a question on the dam. That was it.
Okay. Well, I guess everybody called me this time, because I got a bunch of contacts, but it could have been anybody. I had contacts regarding ARLAC and the community center, a coalition, Parks Board minutes, question about, you know, what's the appropriate detail in minutes, Rock Lake Dam operation. The Plan Commission is looking to schedule a work session, so I got a contact about that. I got a inquiry about our engineering RFP, that I referred to Drake, inquiries about forming Lake Management District. And then I had an opportunity to attend several meetings in the last couple of weeks. So I went to the Ad-Hoc Urban Forestry Committee meeting that was on April 10, and it was really great to see our five citizens that are on that board, and the ideas that they're bringing, and the information that they're sharing, and they're working on completing their first assignment, which is due to us by June 1. So I would encourage, if anyone else is available, to go to their next meeting. I think, Drake, you said it was probably the 29th?
It hasn't been confirmed, but it seems to be trending that way, based on member availability.
Okay, so likely to be April 29, but so if you're interested in going, maybe just verify the, the date with Drake as it gets a little closer. But they're not recorded, and so it's, you know, if you're interested, I think it's nice to also show support by, you know, if one of us can be, be at their meetings. I went to the Library Board Special Meeting, which Ms. Quinno is also at for, talking about fundraising. I attended the School District Meeting last night, because they had an item related to ARLAC and providing funding for a senior center. And then I attended the Joint Review Board on Monday, which is about TID number nine, and I imagine we'll be hearing more about that in the next couple of weeks. Okay, so now it's time for questions and public comment. The public is encouraged to address the council at this time regarding items on the agenda. Public comments may also be made at this time on items that are not on the agenda if you have registered with the city clerk before the meeting has been called to order. The state's open meetings law discourages action by the council on items not listed on the agenda. Please keep your comments limited to three minutes, state your name and address when starting your comments, and fill out the sign-in sheet provided. If there's anyone attending online who would like to speak, please type your name and address in the chat feature. So we have someone at the podium. Go ahead, John.
Okay. I'm John Thody. I live at N 6662 Sherwood Hills Road, and I also own a residence that's on the Mill Pond. I'm here to speak about some work that's being done by an exploratory group regarding forming a Lake Management District for Rock Lake. And as some of you know, I'm also on the RLIA board, and I'm not here representing the RLIA board. We haven't surveyed our members on this at all. I'm here reading a statement about the exploratory group and the progress they've made. Also, this same information is being presented to the township this evening. Rock Lake has long been recognized as a jewel in Jefferson County. It's undeniably a powerful magnet that attracts people to Lake Mills. I'm here today representing the exploratory group that is considering a Lake Management District for Rock Lake. Interest in the Lake Management District emerged last summer during the low water conditions that impacted almost everyone who lives on or uses the lake. Some impacts were small, but some were quite substantial. For many of us, this negative experience reaffirmed how important the health of our beautiful lake is to the community. Creating a Lake Management District now, before we face more significant issues, could make a big difference for the health of our lake and the community, which it is so closely tied to. More than 200 other Lake Management Districts already exist in the state. We've heard from several of their members about the benefits of these organizations. Lake Ripley is one of the lakes in the state that has a Lake Management District. Each Lake Management District has their lake, which in our case would be Rock Lake, as the sole focus of their efforts. They work to identify threats to the lake and avenues towards sustaining quality. These groups coordinate work in the lake, on lake issues, and collaborate with other regulatory bodies who have authority over the lake. A Lake Management District is established through democratic practices and gives landowners within the district boundary a more formal voice when decisions are being made regarding the lake. A Lake District Board decides how they will fund lake work, including levying taxes and applying for grants and loans. How's the Lake Management District created? District formation must proceed according to Wisconsin Statute Chapter 33. Because Rock Lake properties exist in both the town and the city, the formation of the Lake District must be approved by the county board. A petition to the county would be developed, which includes the properties within the district boundary and indicates whether or not the city council has given approval for the petition. For a petition to be successful, signatures supporting the district must be collected from 51% of the parcel owners within the district boundary, or 51% of the land area within the district boundary. As an alternative, obtaining landowners, as an alternative to obtaining landowner signatures, it would be possible to form a district with the approval of the town board and the city council. If a successful petition is achieved, it's a file, it is filed with the county clerk, and a public hearing is held within 30 days. Within three months of the public hearing, findings are reported to the county board, and within six months of the hearing, the county board is required to grant or deny the formation of the district. If approved, the county board would appoint four of the five initial members to the board for the Lake District. This would include three landowners from the district, one person representing the county. A fifth board member would be appointed by either the town or the city, depending upon which has the highest land valuation within the district boundaries. It's important to note that the authority to govern the Lake District is shared by the district board and the district property owners at the annual meeting. While district board's responsibility is conducting the district's business, it is the district's property owners who control the majority of policy matters by electing board members, setting the annual budget, and exercising other powers at the annual meetings. We are in the exploratory stages of a Lake District for Rock Lake. We've had two public meetings and anticipate having two additional public meetings, one during the spring and one during the summer. We're also considering a public survey to determine the support for the Lake Management District. As required by Wisconsin statute, if it is decided to move forward with this effort, we would anticipate asking the city of Lake Mills for permission to include a portion of the city within the selected district boundary. This would enable us to petition the landowners to form a Lake Management District for Rock Lake. The ultimate goal is to protect and enhance the quality of Rock Lake. With that in mind, do you have any questions or comments? Patricia Cicero is here. She's from the county, has more experience with this than I do. And Pat Stevens and Hope are also here, they're in that exploratory group.
Thank you very much. I think we did receive some information, I think, from your group as well, so thank you for sending that, some information about how a Lake District is formed, and kind of a little graphic of the process, so that was very helpful. I think it would be helpful for the council to know when your next informational meetings are, in case anyone wants to attend and learn more about.
Be informed of that.
That would be great. That would be great, just so that we can be aware and, and attend and, and see what others' interest is. Does anyone have any questions at this time, for Mr. Thody? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to make public comment this evening? Okay, I'm not seeing anyone else, so we will close the public comment, and we will move on on our agenda. Item number 10 is the city manager's report. Mr. Daley?
Thank you. Just a few things to note. The spring election was held on April 2, and the presidential preference. 1,249 ballots were cast, 263 of which were absentee, and 986 were in-person ballots on Election Day. There are currently 3,880 registered voters in the city of Lake Mills. The successful administration of this election was made possible by 11 election workers, one chief election inspector, and three city staff. All park restrooms have been open for the season. We have completed conversations on clarifications of the DNR's requirement for the study if we were to proceed with a water level order change, so in May we'll be ready. We have a cost from, from Strand to complete the survey. Essentially, we've worked with the DNR to clarify what exactly, what information they're looking for, and so they've kind of flipped the order of things from their original letter, so that they, if we move forward with it, they, in partnership with the county, will be identifying between 30 and 40 communities, so plant life communities, ecological communities. They'll then provide those GPS coordinates of those to our surveyor, and then they would survey those and get elevations on those communities, so that the DNR could consider how a different lake level might affect those communities. So just recently spoke with our Strand representatives. It looks like for 40, up to 40 sites, we'd be at $4,600 for the surveying work, so we'll be able to have a conversation about that in, in May for the city council to make a decision on if they'd like to proceed with completing that work. We, they, in May, we'll also be ready to have a discussion on the yard waste drop-off relocation plan. So you'll, we'll be seeing that hopefully sometime in May, in consultation with the council president on which agenda it fits best on. An intergovernmental agreement has been executed with the town of Koshknon, and we are providing building inspection services for that township. The two other townships that were discussed are considering it this week. The city received its 32nd consecutive recognition as a Tree City USA, and received its first-ever Growth Award from the Arbor Day Foundation. The Growth Award can be received once every five years, and it's awarded based on accomplishments within some or all of five categories, which include, they call them, "Building the Team, Measuring Trees and Forests, Planning the Work, Performing the Work, and Community Framework." So there's different accomplishments you can achieve within those categories that add up to a certain point total, and if you achieve it, you're awarded a Growth Award. So that was our first time being awarded the Growth Award for the city. Those are the major updates. I can provide you a, one brief update on the dam, since I know you've been receiving communication on it. We had also been receiving significant communication on the dam and why the discharge rate was what it was at. We did reach out to the DNR, once again, to inquire as to what the city's capability was to gradually build up to the summer minimum, essentially. The DNR did confirm for us that we are not permitted to intentionally exceed the spring maximum or the maximum of any given season. And so that is why, when we're above that spring maximum, the dam is in automatic mode. That's why you see it working to bring the lake level back to the spring maximum level. So until May 2, when the summer water level, summer water levels are essentially in effect, we have to manage to the, at most, the maximum of that, which is consistent with the city council's directives. So we, we don't have, we are, we're under an order from the DNR. We don't have the flexibility to, to build up water levels to make sure we're at the summer minimum on May 2. We have to, we can only start building towards that minimum once May 2 arrives. If there's any other questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Daley, and we had quite a few documents. Some are typical monthly financial reports and information from, on emergency services, so thank you for all of those. Are there any questions for city manager on any of those documents, on his report?
I have a question. I, I think it would be interesting to understand the studies that are possibly moving forward with the 30 to 40 eco communities, and any kind of documentation regarding what the game plan is and the timetable by which all of that may occur would be helpful when that's available.
Great. I just had a follow-up question on the Growth Award from the Arbor Day Foundation. Is that something that the foundation, you know, kind of identifies communities that meet those criteria and grant that award, or is it something that someone nominated our community for? How does that process work?
I would have to ask Director Schreiner, if he wasn't able to be here tonight.
Okay.
So I'm, I'm not exactly positive on the process for being awarded it, but I can follow, have him follow up with you.
I was just curious, and, but it's, still, I think it's a nice recognition for our community and the work, and particularly Mr. Schreiner, who's been here for, what, about three years now? I think, you know, some of the changes and improvements he's made in managing our urban forest are probably at work there in, in receiving that recognition, so thank you to him. Any other questions or comments for the city manager? Okay, let's move on to council business. Agenda item 11, our first item, letter A is a discussion or decision on waiver of special events fees for the Lake Mills Optimist Club Junior Fishery. So, Mr. Daley?
Sure. Sorry. We received a request for a fee waiver for the special event permit. The special event permit fee is $40. So we have been, over the past approximately one year, been looking at our special event permit process. We, we will have a new form coming out soon. It's in the final stages of, of development. But in this instance, what we, what we administratively have, have kind of determined is if there is an event that requires city resources in support of it, or has an exclusive use of a, what would otherwise be a public amenity, that it goes through the special event permit process. And so you'll remember last year, the Easter egg hunt had, had historically also gone through the special event permit process. This year, we reviewed that in more detail, and it is not in, intent, it's not an exclusive use of that park. It's a very short event. It, it does not require significant city resources in support of it, so we did not put it through the special event process this year, and essentially just treated it as a group that was using the park, as many do from time to time. And so, but for the fishery, since it does include exclusive use of that city amenity, and there is some city resources used to barricade off the location in, in support of it, and employees that are tasked with preparing for the event, that it would still require a special event permit, and they have requested a waiver of that fee. So that is the background on, on the request.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from council members?
Ms. Curler?
Yes, Mr. Waters?
I'd like to make a motion to waive the special event fees for the Lake Mills Optimist Club for their 24th Annual Junior Fishery, to be held Saturday, June 1, at the Lake Mills Mill Pond area.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Waters and a second by Mr. Fields. Is there any other discussion? Mary?
I'm curious to know if this sets a precedent for other clubs or organizations. If we waive a fee, what criteria we're using that would say yes to the Optimists Club? And yet, you know, does it open the door for us to ensure that we have, you know, clarity on, you know, why we're thinking that we would waive here and, and not others? Or is the fee, this is back maybe to the guidelines of the fee and the requirements of the fees? Or if they're nonprofits, should they be waiving fees? So I'm just, I'm just... Or if they're nonprofits, should they be waiving fees? So I'm just, I'm just curious about if we're opening up, you know, just a question on equity of, of requests or equity of requirements.
Sure. I can defer to Dan for legal advice, but this is, it's case-by-case basis. No one's entitled to a fee waiver. And so you won't be, I don't believe you'll be required to grant a fee waiver to any request that, that comes in, and that the council is, fee waivers are required to be wa, are required to be approved by the city council. So you'll be able to make that determination at this body's discretion.
Excuse me. I, I agree. The, it is not precedential in nature, and there is ordinance in your code that basically requires council acquiescence to waive a fee. So I think the way Drake described it as a case-by-case is, is an appropriate description. In the past, if you are kind of, like, providing a precedential kind of audit of it, I'm only aware of fee waivers that have been granted to nonprofit associations for kind of more civic events in nature. There have been a number of them through time, and generally they're local nonprofits that have been involved in, in some, some form of civic event. So we don't have a specific test in place that is kind of like our community center policy that establishes appropriate groups that are entitled to a fee waiver. In this circumstance, it is the council's discretion, and each and every case is put in front of you.
I would also add that a, a past fee waiver does not guarantee a future fee waiver for the event going forward. So each and every year, the city council, if the request comes in, will have an opportunity to consider it. You know, if a, so if the council were to grant a fee waiver on any event, that event were to grow, if it were to become more resource-intensive or something of that nature, you know, the, the city council retains the right at, at any time in the future to require the fee to be paved and, and decline to waive a permit fee.
Can I ask an additional question? So I know it's, it's only $40, so I know I'm spending a lot of time on it, but I'm curious to know the overall budget that has been allotted as far as fee, in the budget for fee, and if we are running above or below what we are expecting for the year. And so, again, if we were to waive this one and then get a few additional coming in behind it, are we going to be at risk for, you know, compromising the budget plan?
In 2022 and 2023, we had 34 and 35 special event permits respectively. To date this year, we have 18. So we're trending higher than past years. Now, they are front-loaded. Most of them will occur leading up to the summer months. So we, it's not a, an exact trend line. I do not remember exactly what we may have budgeted for special event permit revenue, but it will be a, a small amount. Sam, I don't know if you're able to pull it up?
Well, she does. Maybe I'll share a couple of thoughts. I agree with you that we should attempt to be fair and to apply our policies fairly. In the three years that I've been on the council, last year, the council granted a waiver for the, both the egg hunt, Easter egg hunt and the fishery. The year before, a request came before us, and there was no motion made, so there was no waiver granted. So we've been inconsistent in the three years that I've been on the council in, in terms of how we've handled it. My feeling is that we should be fair to everyone, and I, it's, it's been a little bit of a concern to me, I guess, that each time when we get this request, there's really no information from the organization about why they're seeking the waiver, other than that they simply just would prefer not to pay the fee. So that would help us think about, like you were saying, you know, what criteria are we using to decide whether a particular event should be granted a waiver or not. So we really don't have much to go on in that, in that regard.
I have a question.
No.
Mr. Waters, did you, did you indicate how many years this has been going on in your motion?
No, that was not outlined in my motion. And I don't, I don't, oh, it said the 24, that it was their 24th, I believe, was in the minutes, or in the, the notes. Let me pull that up real quick.
I, I think that was in one of the documents.
It says it's the 24th Annual Junior Fishery.
24 years?
Yes.
Yeah. I, I, I'm gonna agree that, you know, the Lake Mills Optimist Club brings a lot of things to, to Lake Mills that make Lake Mills what it is. And I truly believe that a $40 fee is not worth the extra paperwork to show or to give reason for why we should waive that particular fee. Now, I hear what you're saying, Mary, about, you know, are we setting a precedent? We debated over that a couple of years ago when we were talking about waiving the fee for the community center. That was a, a big question at that time. But since this is not necessarily in here, because with it being in here, there was the maintenance of cleanup and all of that, whereas, whereas at the, you know, at the Mill Pond, it just, it, it seems to me like it would require so few staff involvement. And I could be wrong, but I just feel like $40 is not that big of a deal. And plus, they're not making any money on this. So there's that, too. If they were making money, then it would be a, a reasonable ask. But they've, they do so much for, for so little that I feel like it's worthwhile to allow them to be waiving this fee.
Recreation fees are all lumped together in one line item in a total amount of $3,000. So that would include the special event permit fees, but may also include park rentals, other, other things of that nature.
Thank you.
Ms. Curler?
Yes, Mr. Waters.
A follow-up on Ms. Quidnow's comments. I, I totally agree with what she said there. This, the Optimist Club does a lot for the Lake Mills community. I've never attended the, the fishery myself, but I've attended some of their other events. And they're just a, a great organization that does a lot. And, you know, looking at a $40 fee, it's, to me, it's kind of a no-brainer. Let's move on.
Any other comments or questions or discussion? Okay, if not, Misty, would you please call the role on the motion to waive the special event fees for the Lake Mills Optimist Club Junior Fishery?
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Ms. Schmager?
Aye.
Ms. Quidnow?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
No.
Motion passes 4-1.
Thank you. Our next agenda item, letter B, is Resolution 24-24, which is related to another special event for Town and Country Days. So Misty, would you read that title for us, please?
City Council Resolution 24-24, approving the request for serving alcohol in Commons Park by Sons of the American Legion.
I move to approve Resolution 24-24, approving the request for serving alcohol in Commons Park by Sons of the American Legion.
I'll second.
Motion by Ms. Quidnow, seconded by Mr. Fields. Is this to you, Drake, or Misty?
Sure. It's an annual approval. Alcohol in Commons Park would otherwise be prohibited without specific council action for this special event. And so this is allowing, essentially, this is allowing for service out of the beer tent at Town and Country Days.
Any questions or discussion from council?
Yes.
Mr. Waters?
For this event, is, is there special, during the evening hours when the alcohol's being served, is there special police presence? How's that addressed by the city?
The police chief does assign police officers for the Town and Country Days event. So yes, there is additional police presence for the event.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay, seeing none. Misty, would you please call the role on Resolution 24-24, which is allowing alcohol consumption in Commons Park for the special event Town and Country Days as requested in application for a temporary Class B retailer's license.
Ms. Schmager?
Aye.
Ms. Quidnow?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. Our next item, letter C, is Resolution 24-25, which is a bid award for contract for our curb and gutter and sidewalk maintenance. Misty, would you please read that title for us?
City Council Resolution 24-25, authorizing the city manager and city clerk to execute an agreement for concrete curb and gutter and sidewalk maintenance, Contract LM 1-24.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I'll move to approve Resolution 24-25, authorizing the city manager and city clerk to execute an agreement for concrete curb and gutter and sidewalk maintenance, Contract LM 1-24.
Second. Motion by Mr. Fields, seconded by Ms. Quidnow. Staff.
Thank you. This is your annual concrete maintenance bid. If you recall back in March, the council approved the maintenance program and the sidewalk program. So this concrete maintenance for the year includes dollars from the $300,000 street maintenance fund and the two combining line items that provide $30,000 in sidewalk maintenance. There was one bid on April 11th, and that was from Schreger Concrete. You see in the bid tab that there was an opinion of costs that we provided. That opinion of cost, and I want everybody to understand, was based on last year's prices. So there isn't, I did not put an inflation factor on that number. So you'll see that the prices did come in higher. Came in about 14% higher than last year. I did converse with the low bidder, Schreger Concrete. They are seeing material costs jump dramatically. They've seen at least two $10 increases per cubic yard in the last year. So much of that increase in the prices is due to the cost of materials. Other things to add, the contract came in at $91,862, which, again, is much less than the total maintenance and sidewalk budgets. But I want to also add that there, this contract also provides concrete work that's needed for, say, water main breaks, other utilities, the electric, water, and sewer. So projects that require some concrete work for those other utilities are also included as maintenance items. I guess at this point, I'll open it up to questions in case anyone.
I'm just curious, your thoughts on only having one bid? And I know you did a, you did the comparative overall rate, but any concerns to the fact that you didn't have other companies, you know, offer to complete that service on our behalf?
Great question. So in the last seven years, Schreger Concrete has gotten this bid six of the last seven years. In those seven years, this is the third time that they were the only bidder. The bids range from one to three bidders each year.
Okay.
This would be the third time this has occurred, '24, '21, and 2018. In each of those cases, of course, the contract was awarded to Schreger Concrete, or at least the previous two. Does that help answer your question?
Thank you.
Yes.
Any other questions, comments?
Ms. Curler?
Yes, Mr. Waters.
I, I just wanted to get clarity. This is separate from the TAP grant?
Correct. This is separate from the TAP grant. So the contractor on the TAP grant actually started this week on sidewalk on County Trunk Highway V. And this contract is for general maintenance for the utilities and the street department.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or discussion? Seeing none, let's have a roll call vote on Resolution 24-25, which is a bid award for Contract LM 1-24, the concrete curb and gutter and sidewalk maintenance.
Ms. Quidnow?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Ms. Schmager?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you, everyone. Next item on our agenda is Resolution 24-26. This is the TID number five grant reimbursement for Formal Development. Misty, would you read that title for us, please?
City Council Resolution 24-26, authorizing payment of final TID number five reimbursement grant to Formal Development LLC, Drumland Crossing condominiums, 1204 South Main Street, parcel identification number 24607132422005.
Thank you. Would anyone like to make a motion?
I will make a motion to approve the Resolution 24-26, authorizing payment of final TID number five reimbursement grant to Formal Development LLC.
Do I need to keep reading?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Schmager, seconded by Mr. Waters. Can we have a staff overview?
Sure. So this is a, the final TIF, TID reimbursement for the formal development project in accordance with our development agreement that we have with them. It's a disbursement of $100,000. If you remember, about the same time last year, we made the first half of that payment of 100, dispersed that of $100,000. And so this will be the second half and final payment on their development agreement. The, so they are, they, we have confirmed their eligibility for the reimbursement based on the complete, based on the breaking ground of the foundation being in the ground for the fifth, fifth set of buildings. Oh, base, it's based on the issuance of the build permit for the fifth building. And so they're, they're eligible. The development agreement stipulates that they must meet certain valuations. Are they responsible to cover the gap in whatever, in the, the debt that we've taken out in order to finance the TIF incentive, which was largely for extension of public utilities for the most part. So if there's any questions, we're happy to answer them. But this will conclude our TIF dispersment obligations under the development agreement.
Are there any questions or comments on this item?
I have a question. Just if you can remind us, for this development, is there also some kind of a performance bond or some, or some other sort of financial guarantee? I know they're not, I mean, they're not finished, obviously, with the overall development. Or is, is this the rest of the financial tool that we have to make sure that the work is completed?
They, the public infrastructure that was installed, that was covered by their performance bond, the public infrastructure itself was accepted, I believe that was last year, last fall. And there's a one-year warranty period on that. Once that one-year warranty period is up, we don't have a bond or a surety with regard to those improvements, but we're through the warranty period. We're satisfied there. With regard to the TID, it is distinct. It's not really, it's, it's a term of the contract, the development agreement. It's not really predicated on any other performance than what's dictated in the development agreement. They have performed to the extent that's necessary for them to be eligible for this. And I, I think the reason I make that distinction is, I, I don't think it would necessarily be appropriate to identify it in the same manner as that surety. This is a contract term that they're, they're likely eligible for. The surety is a, a matter of our ordinance and, as well as the contract, to make sure that those improvements that are installed are satisfactory and that they kind of stand up to the test of time. We have at least one freeze-thaw cycle, one winter season through the one-year warranty period. And then there's, at the time of installation, oversight and everything. So you, you, the council, went through a process to accept and to reduce that surety to an amount that was required under ordinance and maintain that through the warranty period, which we're entering its natural end.
I would only add that, that because of the valuation markers that they have to hit, that's their incentive to complete the work. Because if they don't hit those valuations, then they take on obligation. They have to essentially pay their, right, they'll pay their property taxes, and then they'll pay above and beyond that for, if they were, did not meet that valuation, in order to cover the costs that we're not covering, that they guaranteed, that they would be providing as part of this project.
Thank you. So I, I guess, hearing what you've described, and, and I understand clearly under the development agreement that they're entitled to this final reimbursement. And it sounds like- and it sounds like we have other tools at our disposal to address, you know, to make sure that the project is completed. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, seeing none, let's have a roll call vote on Resolution 24-26, which is the TID number five grant reimbursement for formal development, otherwise known as Drumland Crossing at 1204 South Main Street.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Ms. Schmager?
Aye.
Ms. Quinnow?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you. Our next item is Resolution 24-27, Public Depositories. Misty, would you read that title, please?
City Council Resolution 24-27 Designating Official Public Depositories.
Would someone like to make a motion?
I'll move to approve Resolution 24-27 Designating the Official Public Depositories.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Waters, seconded by Mr. Fields. Sam, anything you'd like to tell us beyond what's in the memo?
Not really. Like I said, there's only one depository that I added this year that hadn't been on previous years, and that's the new F and M, or sorry, Fermenters Emergence Bank.
Okay. Any questions or comments from council? Okay, if not, let's have a roll call vote, please, on Resolution 24-27 Designating the Public Depositories.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Ms. Schmager?
Aye.
Ms. Quinnow?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you. So a next item on the agenda is Resolution 24-28. Misty, would you read that for us?
City Council Resolution 24-28 Designating Official Newspaper.
Is there a motion?
I move to approve Resolution 24-28 Designating Official Newspaper.
Second. Motion by Ms. Schmager, seconded by Ms. Quinnow. Misty, I think this was your memo. Anything to add?
There's no changes from previous years. It's an annual resolution designating the Lake Mills Leader as our official newspaper.
Thank you. Any questions or discussion from council? Okay, if not, let's have a roll call vote, please, on Resolution 24-28 Designating Official Newspaper.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Ms. Schmager?
Aye.
Ms. Quinnow?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you. Okay, so we have two items left under Council Business, two ordinances that are being introduced tonight. So the first is Ordinance 1263, which is amending City Code Chapter 27. This is our first reading. So Misty, would you read that for us, please?
Ordinance 1263 Amending Chapter 27 Boards, Committees, and Commission. Article 1 Board of Review, Section 27-2, Time and Place of Meeting. Article 5 Parks Board, Section 27-16 Meetings, Subway Time and Place.
Thank you. So that's our first reading for tonight. We won't be taking any action on it. Ms., Mary?
I was wondering, in this particular ordinance, if I could make a motion to proceed to the third reading and move this to pass this evening, a motion to adopt this particular ordinance, given the nature of its content?
Oh, you can make that motion, yes. Is that sufficient, what she just said, as a motion? Okay, would anyone like to second that? I'll second it. Okay, we have a motion to proceed to the third reading, so waiving the second reading and proceeding to the third reading. Is there any discussion on it? Any comments?
I guess I just asked for some clarification as to what would be the reason for moving to a third reading right away, if we're just changing the meeting dates?
Well, and that's why I, in my perspective, the citizen pushback, feedback, commentary regarding this particular topic would be minimal to none. And I feel the Parks Board would be enabled if we didn't wait two additional readings to allow them to move into the situation where they can get their calendars organized and complete business. So I think it'd be a great example of just moving it forward instead of waiting for a third reading.
And I would add, this is an item that Mrs. Bishop was planning to bring forward. You might recall, she had mentioned it previously, that the Parks Board was interested in changing dates due to the increasing public interest in the issues that the Parks Board works on and their desire to be able to meet in chambers and be videotaped. So I know they already have a meeting tomorrow night that's already on the books. But this would facilitate them, I think, for the subsequent months to be able to make some changes there. Is there any comment from staff, one way or the other, on this?
We have no comment. It's largely procedural, just to give flexibility to the Parks Board, so we have no, nothing, nothing further to offer. But I think Mr. Waters was.
Oh, Mr. Waters, did you have a comment? Sorry.
Yeah, I was just wondering why the Parks Board isn't designating a time? Because I guess what we're trying to do here is to make it a time where it could be telecast or it could be televised or videotaped or one of the, whatever. But there's only a certain amount of times that that's available, and why aren't we designating or picking a time? I think, I mean, you have set meetings for the Public Works, for the Planning Commission, for the Library. I think just about all these boards have set times. Why would, why would this be different, I guess?
I will comment on that, and then I would ask staff if they want to add anything further. I agreed to sponsor this after Mrs. Bishop stepped off the council, and my thinking on this is that the other, those other boards and committees that you mentioned do not have an explicit date set by ordinance. They do have a regular routine of regular dates that they have met, but not establishing something in the ordinance gives a little more flexibility to the Parks Board and other boards, if they need to change a meeting date, that they're not restricted by the ordinance language. So that was the reason that I felt it was a good, good approach. Mr. Daley, is there anything that you would want to add from staff perspective?
I guess the only way, if the Parks Board were to ask for my advice on how to administer this without a date set by ordinance, in past committees that I have advised, it's been usually annually after all appointments have been made. So, you know, you could say May annually, they set a regular meeting date and time that they can, they can make, they can vary from that throughout the year if circumstances arise, but they set a regular date and time at that May meeting, and that way they can adjust based on new membership or whoever might be involved or schedules have changed. And so ideally, we'd be able to lay out what the city council chamber's schedule is for them. Director Schreiner could bring that to them in their May meeting, and then select the date in which this room is available, that they can meet their goals of being broadcast and recorded. So I think that's how, that's how I would envision it working, is to have a regular meeting time set each year, but not have it be dictated by ordinance. If this were to pass, they could still do that, but it would be at an annual meeting where they organize themselves and decide how they'll, how they'll meet in the future.
Mr. Waters, any follow-up?
No, I thought that those other boards were, basically had their dates set. I know that the Public Works did change theirs this year, and it didn't actually work out, so they went back to the normal time period, but, yeah.
And the language in the Public Works Board specifically is the same as this, that the board shall meet monthly as scheduled by the board, basically. The Economic Development Commission is the same. Most subordinate boards in our ordinances do not actually have, you know, third Wednesday of the month, or first Tuesday of the month, or something like that. The city council does explicitly, and that's required by statute.
Thank you, Mr. Drescher.
You're very welcome.
Okay, is there any other discussion on the motion to waive the second reading and move to the third reading tonight? Okay, if not, Misty, would you please call the roll on the motion to waive the second reading and move to third reading?
Ms. Schmager?
Aye.
Ms. Quinnow?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
No.
Motion passes four one.
Thank you. So now, Misty, if you could please read the ordinance a third time.
Ordinance 1263 Amending Chapter 27 Boards, Committees, and Commission. Article 1 Board of Review, Section 27-2, Time and Place of Meeting. Article 5 Parks Board, Section 27-16 Meetings, A Time and Place.
Thank you. Is there? Yes, Mr. Waters?
Would that actually be the second reading? Did she have to do it a third time?
We waived the second reading, so I guess you could call that the second reading. It was, it was the second time that it was read, but it qualifies as the third reading, is that correct?
I believe the intent was to move to the third reading.
Yeah, right.
You could have her read it again if you so desired, but I don't believe it's necessary.
I move to approve Ordinance 1263 as written.
So we do have a motion already on the table for that, right?
I missed that. No, no, we had it for the.
Thank you, okay.
And I seconded.
Thank you. And Mary, a second? All right, okay. I'm sorry, so please repeat yourself so that we get it.
It was a long one. I move to approve Ordinance 1263 as written. I second.
Okay, motion to adopt Ordinance 1263 by Ms. Quinnow, seconded by Ms. Schmager. Any discussion?
I will just add the other item, just for people's awareness. The edit on, under the Board of Review was something that Sam and I caught and Dan as we were looking at this year's Board of Review meeting, which is in April, which under our ordinance wouldn't work, but it's, it's superseded by the statutory requirement. So we just thought, well, it's compliant with the statute, so we thought, well, let's just, let's just tweak this part of the ordinance as well, so it'd just reflect the statutes rather than having something different.
Okay, any further questions or discussion on Ordinance 1263? Okay, hearing none, let's have a roll call vote, please, on Ordinance 1263, which is amending City Code Chapter 27 regarding language in the Board of Review and the Parks Board.
Ms. Quinnow?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Ms. Schmager?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you. Next item is Ordinance 1264, which is amending Chapter 153 of the ordinance. Misty, would you proceed with the first reading?
Ordinance 1264 Amending Chapter 153 Officers and Employees. Article 5 Neighborhood Service Officer, Section 153-9 Powers and Duties.
Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Fields, for sponsoring this. Is there any discussion, or staff do want to clarify what the purpose of this ordinance is?
If you have in-depth questions, Attorney Dreschler is available, but in general, this is essentially to explicitly provide the ability of neighborhood service officers to write, to issue parking citations. So the Police Department does hire a number of them during the summer season, and they are present at Sandy Beach predominantly, but throughout the community as well. This is granting a specific delegation of authority to be able, for the chief to be able to delegate that authority to the neighborhood service officer position.
Thank you. And I look back at Chapter 153, I think maybe, Mr. Fields, you were probably the only one on the council when that was adopted, but it was just a few years ago, I think that the Neighborhood Services Officer was added, right?
Yes, this was very popular, especially during our Main Street rebuild, that we use this person to do a lot of communication for us and just keeping everybody aware of what's going on. So this would actually help the Police Department with expanding his powers just a little bit to assist them and take care of some of their day-to-day duties where they can focus more on patrol and security.
The one thing I'd add there is the position itself already has the ability to be delegated authority by a number of City of Lake Mills departments, and they're all for enforcement purposes. Mr. Fields' description is spot on. He also acted as kind of the liaison in the Highway 89 and then subsequent Mulberry Street redevelopment project. Brian Kane was our first Neighborhood Service Officer. He also worked as our lead source lateral investigator and kind of the feet on the street with regard to that effort, but a lot of enforcement. In discussion regarding this specific power, the Chief of Police and I spent a lot of time discussing the power to arrest and what the citation for parking, a parking citation enforcement is, it really is. And a number of municipalities have similar positions, either community service officers or neighborhood service officers, that have been created and empowered in this specific manner. So we're confident that there's not a municipal court issue with regard to the issuance of the citations and the validity of them. This position will, when engaging in this manner, will still be overseen by the Chief of Police. We have checks and balances in place. It is looking to create some new efficiency and some new opportunity, and probably just maybe a little bit more presence at places like Sandy Beach during the summer months, when there are substantial parking issues that we've been made aware of through time, that just really kind of drain the PD's resources. So we're looking to create some efficiencies and maybe even increase revenue a little bit here, and then also just increase presence and make sure that we're moving towards compliance on this issue. So, thanks.
Thank you, and I would echo your description. I took a look at Chapter 153 earlier today, and it lists several other delegations, so this is just adding another paragraph with another category of delegation, so. Okay, so we've completed the first reading tonight.
Ms. Curler?
Yes. Mr. Waters?
Did you beat me to it?
I don't know. You can go first.
I was going to move to push it to the third reading.
Question, actually.
Okay, you go first.
Mr. Waters?
Did it just freeze?
Yeah.
Oh, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hear you, yes.
Can I ask my question before you do that?
Yes, please do.
Is the police chief in attendance tonight?
No.
No.
Okay, I was just wondering if the police chief has weighed in on this ordinance suggestion?
He brought it to the attorney's attention, who then sought a council sponsor for it. So he was, it was at his request that this, that we started down this process.
Okay, thank you. Laws open.
Okay, now I'm going to move to push this to the third reading for similar reasons to what Mary said, for the other one. It doesn't appear like there would be a lot of citizen kickback on this particular issue, and if we can expedite it for efficiency purposes, then why not?
Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Quinnow. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Quinnow, seconded by Ms. Schmager, to waive the second reading and move to the third reading tonight. I'd have to say I don't see these two ordinances that similarly. I think the first one is very much efficiency. I can't imagine a citizen having a concern about it and its consistency with the statutes and with the rest of our ordinance. This is a new authority in 1264 and a new way of doing business, and it involves law enforcement. So I guess I, I think I want to make sure the public has plenty of opportunity to be aware of it. I'm not aware that it would be time-sensitive or affect our ability to hire summer officers. Mr. Daley, can you address that?
No, the hiring, the hiring is ongoing, and the Chief of Police has already secured some who will serve as, in this, in this position, and we, so no, it won't affect hiring. Three reading, including today, three readings would take us to the second meeting in May. So it would come before Memorial Day, when, you know, you could, I guess unofficially, summer kicks off. So I think we would want to move forward on this, certainly before Memorial Day, before the busy season starts. So I, we'll be able to accommodate whatever occurs tonight, if it's. If it's, if it's, if we proceed to the third reading, then the authority will be bestowed sooner. If not, we will, we will make whatever accommodations we have to, to ensure that enforcement is, action is taken until the authority's delegated.
Yes, Mary. I understood that we had this, we've had this role in the past, so this is, this is just a more formal, an ordinance, this is an ordinance, and that was more of a pilot, so how does this compare to the last?
It's an additional authority grant delegated to this position. And so essentially, it adds the police chief as a, as a city officer that's able to delegate authority to this position.
Okay.
For parking enforcement specifically. If you look at the code, chapter 153, which Lisa mentioned that she had reviewed, the police chief already has authority to delegate to this position certain abilities, certain powers right now. It didn't include parking enforcement previously. This amendment explicitly includes enforcement. Yep, that's, that's it.
Any other questions or comments on the motion to waive the second reading and move to the third reading?
Ms. Kurler?
Yes, Mr. Waters?
I voted against the, moving to the third reading in the last ordinance that we read. The reason is, I always vote against moving to the third. We have rules about ordinances going for second and third reading for a reason, so that we can get public feedback, and I hate to make a presumption that the public does not want to comment on something. So even though I did vote in favor of that ordinance when it came to that vote, I will also vote against moving to the third on this.
Thank you. Any other comments or discussion? Okay, seeing none, can we have a roll call, please, on the motion to waive the second reading and move to the third reading on ordinance 1264?
Mr. Fields?
No.
Ms. Kurler?
No.
Mr. Waters?
No.
Ms. Schmager?
No.
Ms. Quidnow?
Aye.
Motion fails.
Okay, so we are back to ordinance 1264. We've completed the first reading tonight, so that will go on to our next agenda for a second reading. Okay, so we are finished with our council business tonight, and we have recommendations for future agendas. And since this is our organizational meeting, what we typically do at the next meeting is all the board appointments, and I would like to propose that we follow the same process that we have in the last several years. So if council members want to, just let me know your top three choices for which board you would like to serve on, and I'll follow up with you, and then I'll be looking at the vacancies or the term, turnovers on the, for our citizen members. So we'll have those for May 7th, which is our next meeting. Mr. Daley, do, what else do you have on your list for future agendas?
Just the items, mostly the items I had mentioned before, so we'll have a discussion on whether to move forward with...
Lake studies, I think you said, right?
The surveying work for the communities that will be identified by the DNR and the county. We'll have a conversation, we, we'll be prepared in May for a conversation on the yard waste drop-off relocation plan and having the city council sign off on that, on that plan. And then I do anticipate that in May, we will, I will be bringing a collective bargain agreement to the city council for ratification with the police union.
I think I also heard that Legendary Lake Mills is maybe going to be giving us a presentation on their, some strategic planning that they've been doing?
Yeah, they're, yep, so they're, I think they're, they have their annual review, and then they also have an accreditation process, so I think the first meeting in May, they're prepared to give a presentation.
Okay, super. And then the proposed TID number nine, when will that come to the council?
That will come, that will be May 7th. So it'll be, it's at Plan Commission for a Public Hearing on next, next week, Tuesday. So then it would go, then the city council has to approve, and then the Joint Review Board has to approve following that city council meeting.
Okay.
So that's the remaining process for that.
So then I know, looking out ahead, we'll also have the RFPs on planning and engineering are closing soon, so probably later in May, we'll have those, and then the Ad hoc Urban Forestry Committee, their first assignment to us should be coming at the end of May, so we'll probably see that in June, I'm guessing, right?
Yeah, I anticipate, I spoke to the chair, and I anticipate that they will be finalizing their recommendation at the end of May. They did request to present at the second meeting in June, just to get their presentation ready.
Oh, okay.
So if we, I believe we can accommodate that, so the second meeting in June would be appreciated by the committee.
Okay. That sounds good. One other thing I wanted to mention, and we've, before Mary joined us, we have talked the last couple of meetings about having a work session with our council to update our goals and make sure that we're giving the staff good direction on, you know, what we would be looking for, for priorities and, you know, in the planning the next budget. So I would like to go ahead and look at that and maybe work with Drake to, you know, start to look at scheduling that and how we would, how we would manage that work.
Ms. Kurler?
Yes.
I have a question for Mr. Daley related to Sandy Beach. I was just wondering how we're looking on the timeline there, and when would we be seeing that again? Sandy Beach, Trenton.
I don't have a timeline for you. I should be meeting with the architects in the coming, within the next couple of weeks. The contract's been executed, so we're moving forward with design, but I don't have a timeline for you on exactly when the next presentation to this body will be.
Okay, is that, can we get a timeline maybe by our next meeting?
I will do my best.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Any other suggestions for future agenda items? Mary?
A question about wastewater treatment plant, next steps.
I have a, I have a meeting scheduled with representatives with the city of Jefferson coming up here in the second half of April, so I'm hoping to have some additional information for you. We're also waiting to see, there is a community not far from us that is in the bidding process, and their bids will be closing soon on a greenfield development of a wastewater treatment plant, and so that should get us some real-world numbers on what we're seeing to assist us in projections for what the cost of our, of a facility for us would be. So we are, we're greatly anticipating those to see how they line up with what we've been thinking recently.
Well, and not to jump the gun, but I would anticipate that will still be a priority for the community, so, you know, when you have sufficient new information, maybe even just an informational update would be great in the next month or so.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. Anything else for the good of the order? All right, seeing nothing, I'll call this meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night.